Meeting to order is currently posted on March 14th. There's going to be a discussion and presentation of Willow products, sir.
All right. First of all, thank you guys so much for having us back. My name's Josh Hill. I'm the Director of Sales and Marketing for Willow Products. We're based out of Decatur, Alabama. We're going to be talking a little bit today about the Willow Wedge. The product that we'll be showcasing is the Wedge. This product was designed about seven years ago. We were the first to market it. We have three patents on the product. I'll talk a little more in detail about that. And then we'll talk a whole lot about the features, functions, the security features of it. We'll answer any questions that you guys have. I typically don't do a whole lot of the video presentations. Those seem to get boring. I'd really just rather show the product itself and let you guys see it in action, come up, mess with it, look at how it works, and ask questions. It'd be very interactive. So at any point if you have a question, please just ask. It's perfectly fine. So working with Fulton County in Atlanta is when we decided that there was a need out there, and that's kind of how the product came to be. The federal government stepped in for them and basically said, "You've got to do something about the lock situation." They came to Willow, and this is how the wedge was developed, is working with Fulton County about eight years ago. They have roughly 1,400 of these. Since, the lock has never been cracked, it's never been popped, it's never been defeated. We do not have a single case. We have roughly about 1,700 going up in LA County. We have them all over the United States. Right now, we're about 7,200 total in operation. One of the counties just west of here, Canadian County, we just won an EPO in the bid to move forward with their project. I'll be leaving here shortly, headed over there to kind of get an idea of their door schedule and look at doing their installation next. So one of the very first things that I want to show you guys is our... And you'll see it more from back here, but if this is the frame of the cell door, a lot of people ask us, "Well, why is it mounted on the outside?" And the reason is, is we call this a surface-mounted lock pocket. What we did is we built an offset. So you can see how that if I'm inside the cell, and an inmate tries to manipulate or fish something in and around to try to manipulate the lock, it's very difficult to go around the frame and then this one-inch offset to actually manipulate the roll bolt or the latch. So this offset is one of the very first things that we patented. The second thing that you will notice on the device is this piece of metal here. We call this our gripper. This is the second thing that is patented to our product. What this does is if someone does wire something or sneak something in here, or slam the door with something in here, the gripper will pinch against the receiver out here, and if they try to manipulate it, or tug on it, or move it, it will just shred or tear whatever that piece of debris or paraphernalia may be. So it doesn't look like much, but this is a very important feature of our product. The third patented feature we have is the tamper alarm. So if an inmate does try to manipulate the lock, start tampering with it for whatever reason, you will get an audible alarm. So this is important because... That way, if there is an officer on the floor, they hear that audible alarm, we'll talk a little more about the indication line in just a second, but there's two unsecure, I guess, visible and audible notations that lets that officer know, "Hey, we're in an unsecure situation. There's something going on." What we've also noticed over the years is inmates start to police themselves, especially as new inmates come in. Some of the inmates that have been in for a while, they know that this lock has not been defeated, cannot be defeated. They will start to police themselves. "Hey, Jimmy, quit messing with the lock. You're not getting out. Leave it alone." It really becomes an irritant to the other inmates. That's just a kind of side benefit. But the LED indication light is nice for the officer on the floor because he can do a visual scan, kind of look around that day room and see, "Hey, I've got green, 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 green," and then may have a red situation that alerts them that there's something going on. So one of the most common ways that we see inmates trying to defeat a lock is using what we call a sheeting method. And I'm sure those of you who have worked inside the jail, you see this all the time. One thing that they will try to do is put something in the receiver, close the door, and in a, you know, in an environment especially where they're allowed to shut their own door, you see this quite often. So the door looks secure. It looks closed, but I've got something in there, wedged in there, that I'm trying to manipulate. So as I try to pull that back, you can see the gripper is not allowing me to do anything with it. Typically, what they want to try to do is to get something between the latch bolt, pull that where they can pop the lock. That is the most common method that most inmates use. The second most common method that we see is they pack the debris, they pack debris in the receiver, which doesn't allow the latch bolt to close properly. Therefore, it looks locked, it looks closed, but it's not. So if we pack the debris, or if we were to pack this with anything and close it, and it doesn't shut, the officer on the floor is going to get a red indication, "Hey, something's going on." And they'll also get that audible alarm. Now, one feature we built into our receiver is we made it hollow. So another reason why we mounted on the outside is because of this reason. We've got roughly about nine inches of space here that it would take a lot of debris to actually pack that receiver full, but we also have a clean-out pore. You can't really see it on the bottoms. So that if that does happen, anybody in the maintenance department or officer on the floor can simply remove the clean-out pore. Any debris that's in there, simply just fall out. So we've got a lot of different features and functions built into this device to make it the most safe, secure lock on the market today. Now, another thing that we are looking at, especially here, is we call this the Wedge Plus. It's more of a solution. So the plus is this continuous piano hinge. A lot of inmates have found that if their cell door is open, and I've got just three hinges like a standard door would have, they try to shove something up in one of the top, bottom, middle, usually a book or a sandal or something like that, and they'll shove something in there and slam the door. What that typically does is they try to warp the door. I think you can attest that that happens pretty often. We see it across the country. They warp the door, and then it causes a malfunction on the lock. With this continuous hinge, there's no way that they can do that. So when you couple the continuous hinge, which is a welded situation all the way down the door, all the way down the frame, with the wedge, this is the most absolute comprehensive solution that is on the market today. We have this going on in facilities all over the country, from Alabama to Colorado to California, right next door, and then hopefully one day here. But this is what we call our Wedge Plus product. And the plus is simply just this continuous hinge. A lot of times, we do have to do a little work to some of the doors that are warped. It's not a big deal for us to do because we're actually taking that door completely off. Unless the door itself is just beyond repair, typically my guys can straighten that out. And then if they need to do a little manipulation on the hinge, it's not a big deal. So even though we may have an old worn-out door, as long as it's not just bent completely out of, you know, just unrepairable, my guys will be able to repair it, put it on here, weld it all up to where you're not having to invest in any more hardware, especially when it comes to the doors and frames, which can get quite expensive. Now, this is an electric lock, so if... The typical situation, you've got your control panel, and if you need to unlock the lock from the control panel, you would have a switch that would remotely unlock the door. Now, I think right now, the situation in the jail is a lot of the pods, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, the controls do not work. So that is something that we have looked at and tried to address, at least give you guys some pricing and an idea of what it would take to get that back in operation. But that would at least free up your officers from having to come and basically unlock each door, which I think is really is what's happening today. That's something that's, I guess, up for discussion for you guys, but it would make, I think, everything a whole lot easier for the officers on the floor. That is the product itself. Now, one thing that we see quite often too is do we have to worry about certain things being in the way, like the food passes, windows? In most cases, that is not a big deal because we move the handle anyway. There's an integrated handle in the wedge product, so we typically would remove that handle, and we're only about four inches over into the door. So typically, we, very rarely do we see any kind of, I guess, interference with the installation of it. Another thing is a lot of the corner, if you have corner cells, where we don't have the room to mount other cells, we simply can reverse the swing of that door in most cases. Because we're going with this continuous hinge, it doesn't really matter which side that the door hinges are on today, because we're going to be changing that with this continuous hinge in a lot of cases. So we do have, you know, a few tricks of the trade, I guess, when it comes to situations like that. And I've looked at the facility, and I really don't see any major issues or obstacles when it comes to that. That really is the product, kind of in a nutshell. At this time, I would love to answer any questions that you guys have. If anyone wants to come up and kind of demonstrate it and mess with it, try to manipulate it, we'd welcome that.
Tommy?
So how many of these locks are we looking at getting?
Four hundred.
Okay. How'd you come up with 400? Why 400 and not 200 or 600 or 800?
We originally, Brooks, our Assistant Jail Administrator, we're looking at some of the worst, the more serious areas where more serious crime people are housed, but Scott...
Yeah, we originally were going out for 200, and then we have with the addition of a slider. He has a locking mechanism that works with our sliders as well, but that's not a sole source item. And really, once we started looking more at the wedge, we switched gears and decided that we wanted to take care of the more, the maximum security inmates here. So that number went from 200 to 400. Eight floors, all maximum security inmates, that's 200 cells. And then there's 200, there's two pods on 10 and two pods on four that we would like to address, and that makes a total of 400. And that fit within a budget of a million, 90,000, I believe, is what the estimate was at that point, which was, which was lower than what it was with the sliders, the 100 sliders that were going to be fixed.
So you have 400 maximum security?
400 maximum security cells that we'd like to have these installed on the insert.
And that's all maximum security?
Yes, yes, according to our matrix right now. Now, that can, we can move that matrix around, but that's what we have right now.
Okay. If I may. So you've looked at all 400 of these doors that is proposed that these be put on?
We have not currently looked at all 400 doors. We have visited at least, I would say, two pods. If I'm not mistaken, two pods of the 400, which is probably going to be roughly around 100 of the doors we have actually been inside and looked at. In most cases, a lot of the pods are identical. We see that across the country as well. So again, unless the door physically will not shut today, it really is not going to be an obstacle for us because we're going to be removing it, we're going to be removing the old hinges and coming back with this. So there's just not a whole lot that I see that would be an obstruction for us to do the 400 doors.
You mentioned a little bit ago that if the door frame was bent, that that could impact your installation. So as of right now, at least on 300 of the proposed 400 doors, we do not know if we'd be putting on a million-dollar product for a $10 door, and that it might not work, correct? As of right now?
If it's shutting today, then we're fine. Now, if you've got some doors that will not shut today, those will need to be addressed.
But you'd need to actually look at them and have, I don't know, an engineer or somebody, look at that, somebody who installs these, and tell you for sure, because...
If it's shutting today, we're good.
And you're confident that you've matched these with the doors that you've seen upstairs, and that this isn't going to like overweight the door, or not work with the door, at least you've seen 100 of the proposed 400?
Correct. The unit itself weighs 26 pounds. The specs of those cell doors are way, way stronger than just for the 26 pounds. So we do not see that being an issue whatsoever. And as long as the cell door is closing today, we're fine because we're going to be removing it. And typically, what happens is the hinges is what gets warped and gets bent, and they get pulled out from the frame. We're no longer going to have to worry about that because we're going to be welding this to the door and then to the frame. So very rarely do we see a warped frame. It's more of a bad hinge, or the door gets warped because the hinge may get pulled out just a little bit. And I think you've had to weld some of those hinges back in place, but again, it's going to be insignificant because we're not, we're not even going to worry about the old hinges. We're basically going to be coming back with our own.
May I suggest that those are the original doors. Everybody knows there were some design and building issues when the jail was built 28 years ago. And may I suggest that if we're going to do anything, we're going to spend this much money to put it on there, that we make for darn sure that every single one of those, that we tested out, and that you have somebody tested out, because, I mean, who knows what went in the design of those doors and whether they're going to be too weak to handle something like this. So, I mean, at the very least, you need to get somebody in here to, you know, if you're going to spend that much money, because there are other locks that could be used, I think, that are not quite this expensive. And so at the very least, you would need to take a look at that, it seems to me, before making a decision on that margin of investment.
That is not a problem. We could have our engineers to come out and actually inspect each door before we install it. No problem whatsoever. And we would work with you guys if we do see something, maybe that, you know, was just beyond repair or beyond our scope. We would work with you to try our best to either fix what we have before we went to $30,000. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, so if, how long, you're going to have to get in there with welders, obviously, and that's going to take some time. So how long would you envision, say, a pod being down? Because, you know, if you've got guys, I actually can weld, know enough about it to be dangerous only, but looking into an arc welder, it can damage the eyes. I mean, your employees know what to do and all that, but for other inmates, even in that pod, I would be concerned about claims against the county, et cetera. So you're probably going to have to shut down the pod, I would assume, if you're in there? Okay? So what's the cost of that? I think that'd be more for the sheriff's office. If we're shutting down one of these pods, it's a maximum security. Where else we can put them? And how much is that disruptive of the processes, and how much downtime, et cetera, are we going to face from that?
We currently have a pod down right now that we're using as a pivot pod. We're rotating it around because we're upstairs right now, painting and doing locks and waters and other things right now. So as of right now, we've got a pod that's down, a 50-man pod that we can use and we can rotate around.
That's the plan, Mr. Commissioner. We're going to, you know, the pod will be vacated. There won't be any inmates in there while this work's going on, so...
Right. I'm getting at, there's obviously some cost to doing so. There's some cells then that can't be used while you're doing that. I mean, I'm not suggesting that that's, you know, an insurmountable thing, but it's a cost that the county, you know, the jail would bear in terms of implementing this, or quite frankly, probably any solution going forward. So I just wondered what that would be in terms of shifting people over and extra manpower and...
Not an issue whatsoever.
I don't see any cost at all with the population being where it's at. That's what allows us to vacate a pod, to do this work. It's just, it's just our staff moving inmates from one pod to another while this work's going on.
Well, we, some of the, some of the cells are still triple, they're triple cells. Some quadruple right, right now. So there is a cost to it in the sense that we could alleviate that situation with triple and quadruple selling if we were doing something different with it. I'm not, again, trying to say...
No, I understand. We've addressed the reason for triple selling a lot. Gene Bradley, would you address that issue, why we're still triple selling with the population where it's at? And that's a good question, Mr. Commissioner, but I think, Gene Bradley's or other Assistant Jail Administrator, there's real reasons why we're still triple selling, because of a lot of reasons. Gene will talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, most generally, and you can probably attest to this, going around the country in jails, most generally, you utilize 80% of your, a lot of jails, to allow for classifications based on gender, charges, case relations, gangs, all of that kind of stuff. So for us, that magic number would be about 1,700 for the amount of beds that we've got in this jail. We're kind of right at that number, but because of the issues in regards to renovating pods, you still have some issues probably with our gang stuff. It's probably been the most prominent thing recently, is some of those separations. That allows you not to be quite as flexible in eliminating all the triple cells based on separations and that kind of stuff. But our magic number's kind of right where we're sitting. So the ideal would be is once we get these locks fixed and all that kind of stuff, and we implement all 28 pods again, that would, if not completely, really close, eliminate the triple selling issue.
How long would this take to implement all this?
Currently, if you looked at it, the easiest way to explain it is if I've got one guy, he can put two wedges on per day. That's just one guy. So depending on how many cells that I have in a pod, we would bring accordingly the maximum amount of manpower we need to get a pod done as quickly as possible. Give you guys time to move inmates from one occupied pod to that pod while we do another. We work, we work with your schedule, and we understand how that works. But just to make it simple, one man roughly can put on two wedges in an eight-hour day, so about four hours per door to do both the wedge and the hinge install.
Okay, so roughly 1,600 man-hours, and that's not including, you know, working around the shifting and all that. I guess you can use some of that while you're doing it. So, you know, four-year work, I mean, so it's going to take a while to get this implemented. So about how much time do you think?
Well, do you only work eight hours a day and you come in and do this? No, not necessarily. We typically are at the, we work in discretion and try to partner with you on that. So, you know, I've got guys that they, I mean, it's not a big deal for them to work a 10 or 12-hour day. They prefer that if they can get done a little early, you know, with the complete project. So we work completely and partner with you to try to maximize or try to minimize the impact to your facility. I would honestly have to put a calculator to that, and right off the top of my head, I just, I don't have that answer for you. But I can get that, and I can get you a more firm time in terms of hours based on the man that we can bring in. And a lot of times, we also even hire local labor if need be. So whatever it takes to minimize the impact to your facility, we will do.
And then maybe for the sheriff's office, would we have any additional manpower costs in terms of security and things like that? Obviously, an arc welder, at one point, you didn't allow bleach in the jail because there was a concern it could be used as a weapon. Well, arc welders, you know, could be used as a weapon potentially too. So are you going to have to do extra security in order to have people working there in that situation, or how's that going to work?
Escort them to and from, and then you'd have a housing monitor set in there. Depending on the hours of the day, more likely to be a daytime shift, and they would just have a housing monitor set and monitor that. The pod would be locked down, there'd be no inmates in there, so it's a secure situation. I mean, I don't foresee any problem whatsoever with that.
And we work with, we'll work with you in terms of equipment. If we need to store the equipment outside of the building, we can do that. We can store it in one of the vacant cells and lock it up and have it more secure. We're used to doing it multiple ways. It just really depends on your protocol.
And most of the time when we have that cell down, if he's in there working, I'm having maintenance staff in there going through everything else, whether the pod's vacant or... Has the sheriff's office looked at alternatives other than this one for locks?
This is the product that we feel most confident with. We've done some other research, and to be honest, I couldn't tell you the company's names, but when we landed on the wedge, we started talking to other people that have them. We, again, Canadian County is getting 26 or 27 of them, I believe.
26 for their maximum.
Everyone that I speak with says this is the way to go. And these are correctional experts throughout the country, so, I mean, the testimony today was nobody's defeated them within at least eight years. So we're fairly confident this is the way to go.
Well, and probably the only other company that was very similar, and I was talking to you about that...
Yeah, I'll mention that as well.
Yeah. If you could talk a little bit about the differences between...
So, again, we were first to marketing with the product. We hold the three patents. There are, from what I understand, there are two other companies that we would consider somewhat a competitor, that have built a surface-mounted lock. One product is from Southern Folger, and the other is from a company called Cornerstone. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of them. Cornerstone employees actually left Willow, went on their own, and took our design and did the best they could to not breach some of the patents. But the things that they cannot provide is the tamper alarm, the gripper, and the offset. So they would be in direct violation of the patent. They do not have the security features that this product has. They have, I would say, probably only a tenth of the product in the field. I could not tell you, and don't even want to try to attest to if their lock has been defeated. I do know, I can say, that we have come in, at least on three facilities, and removed their lock off and placed our wedge on. But I can tell you that of the 72, roughly 100 that we have in operation, we have yet to have one defeated situation, and I just don't know of another lock in the country that can say it has never been defeated.
I just want to, one question to clarify. Have you met with other vendors, other lock vendors?
I personally haven't been.
Any others from the sheriff's office? Any other vendors?
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, can the public ask?
Sure.
When you did that demonstration with the sheet, if I remember correctly, last time, there was a tamper alarm that if something was being tampered with, that green would change. Would that not trigger with the sheet display you just did?
Good point. It just depends on what it's being tampered with. So if I put something in the receiver, and the latch bolt is allowed to engage, the tamper alarm will not go off. But it still lets me know that it's not stopping the lock from engaging. If I pack this full, and then the lock, the latch bolt will not lock into place, then the tamper alarm will sound, that audible alarm, and you will get a... the tamper alarm will sound that audible alarm and you will get a red light situation. So, as long, I could put something in here, but as long as it still allows the latch bolt to lock, it's still locked, it's secured, it's not going to go off.
So, in that situation, why, when you started pulling on it, why did the alarm not go off?
Because it's, it is latch bolt and there was no...
It's already engaged.
It was safe, secure, there was nothing to audible to alarm.
If I remember correctly...
And if I continued to pull and pull and pull, I would probably either break this or break my back or pull the machine over before it would actually ever do anything.
So, and that tamper alarm is an audible, if I remember correctly?
It is. So, if, if I start to manipulate or do anything with it, it's going to give me that audible alarm that something is going on. Somebody is trying to manipulate this lock. Or if the latch bolt is not properly engaged, you're going to get this indication.
So, if an inmate has one of these, is trying to mess around with the lock, and these things are beeping all the time, 24/7, isn't that going to tie up our sheriff's deputies a ton having to go in there and just check to see? It's kind of like, you know, you know, guys who want to get a reaction out of somebody will go on a, on a street and start kicking the cars down the street so all the car alarms go off and everybody has to come out and check it out and stuff like that. Isn't this going to present that kind of a problem where you're going in and these alarms are going off all the time and that's going to eat up a lot of our deputies' time going out and checking out what's wrong?
Well, if your alarm's going off and lock's not engaged, which means that we need to go and secure the inmate anyway, correct?
That's exactly right. So, I'd rather know that somebody is trying to manipulate the lock versus me walking in blind and have that lock already being manipulated, not knowing, and then they can just come right out. So, in terms of a secure situation for the officer, I'd much rather have this thing going off, which is something that we did for that purpose, to let that officer on the floor know something is going on. Somebody is trying to manipulate this lock. We're hoping to prevent that so that they're not successful. Because if they are successful, it's too late. They can come out at will. And if you put me in any lock in the country and I shut my own cell, I can get out. I mean, I'm not trying to sound boastful, but just a, just a normal wide-jam lock with nothing but time, I can defeat that lock. This, I can't defeat.
So, are these pods in which the people would be locked down pretty much all the time?
More than any other population because of the maximum security, yes. So, we're, we're doing some creative stuff right now with minimum security programming stuff that would not apply to the maximum security. That's, I think, why Kevin Cedric really was looking at, that's going to be the best population to do this system with.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is if the door is locked, then the alarm can't go off, right?
If the door is locked, so if I'm, if I'm locked and I'm in a situation just like this, I know that this, this is secure now. It's latch bolt, it is locked. If somehow they were to shimmy a, a piece of wire or something in there and get behind the bolt, which I don't even know would be possible, that might set off the, the tamper alarm. But in most cases, if it's locked and I've got a green light, that latch bolt's in there, it's a, it is secure. I mean, we, we would call that a secure situation.
So, all they'd need is a piece of wire to not open it, but just to make the alarm go off and waste it up these times?
Again, they would have to try to, they would have to get that wire around this offset.
I think you missed that part of the 245-degree angle.
There, there is a one-inch offset that we designed, it's part of our patent, that makes it, I never want to say impossible, but virtually impossible for them to jimmy that wire in and around and then bypass the gripper to get to the latch bolt or the roller bolt, making it virtually impossible for them to weasel anything back in around.
And your gripper is a third patented product.
It is. And the gripper then pinches against whatever may get caught in there. For example, and if it wasn't here, I'll be apologize, but so if I'm shut, that gripper will pinch against the material and nine times out of 10, that's what's going to happen or I dump this over on myself.
And the alarm didn't go off right then because the gripper was doing its job, right?
Gripper's doing its job.
You weren't secure.
I'm secure and the bolt is latched. So, really, it was just a mute point for them to even try.
And the maintenance on the sheriff's office, we're going up every shift, 20, 30 doors just for, for them rigging the doors and stuff. So, we're already going up there doing stuff. So, if they shut and this lock's locked, that actually saves us time, we can go on to other maintenance.
The beauty of that as well is the cleanup system, you don't have to open the door, is that correct?
That's right.
You don't have to open the door to clean the cleanup. So, that's going to save our maintenance staff.
I can work on, I can work on every function of this lock with the inmate being secure and, and I don't have to worry about them coming out on me. I don't have to worry about any other thing. I can do any of the maintenance required on this from the outside with the deadbolt and, and the inmate secured inside.
So, that would free your staff up tremendously, correct?
Free it up and while we also have tools and stuff in there, we can work on the outside. Right now, it's a lot of times we have to open up the door while the inmates are in there.
And we have to provide the security staff to go with the maintenance staff to do that. And that's going to eliminate the security staff having to go in with them. So, that, I wanted to make sure everybody understood how important that aspect of this locking device is. That saves all kinds of man-hour and man-time.
And if you weren't in here, the, the receiver on our product is hollow. So, there is roughly nine inches by four inches of hollow space in here. It takes a lot of debris to pack that receiver full. And if they did get it full for some reason and the latch bolt could not go in and lock, then you would get the tamper alarm that would go off. And if they did pack it full, clean out for it, you can't really see, but at any time, you guys can come up and look. It is here, simply unscrew it, the debris, clean it out, and you're back, good to go.
We don't have a current clean out on ours. Ours has about a little bit of space like that, so we're actually reaching our needle nose and trying to dig out as much debris as we possibly can to rid of that one. You undo the bottom hatch, shut the wire, push everything out, button it up, go on.
Are you going to have to provide power to each door for the lock?
If, if, if you're going to use the controls and, you know, do what we were talking about, to use the lock electronically, then we would have to have power to each of the doors.
But it would be mechanical if there wasn't power, you just wouldn't have the alerts, right?
Correct. So, if you, if you didn't have power, you could still use it mechanically and still use all the different features that's in here. Absolutely. So, you can use it mechanically or manually. Yeah, that would be one.
So, was the quote for the electrical or just the mechanical?
We were on, on maximum security inmates. Now, if we were to move forward and have the ability to do other locks throughout the facility on minimum to medium security, we would request to use the switchboard. However, on the maximum security, the agency felt comfortable with the key locking system. So, there was another option that was available, which was a Sallyport light that would indicate that all of the lights are either green or red. And we decided not to go with that because our staff could simply go through there and see the green or the red. So, we, so that was a $4,500 option that we opted out of. The switchboard was around $45,000, I believe, per switchboard. We opted out of that for the maximum security population, but we're still going to get the green light indicator, correct? With, with just a key system. So, we're confident.
As long as we have power to the door, yeah.
We're confident that this is, this is what we're wanting to do.
There's, there's power to the door. It's just we cannot use our control boards because of the gear boards and that actual...
So, you have existing power?
We have existing power, existing wiring.
And this could be upgraded if they wanted, you know, if they just got, if you brought the base model then down the road, if you decide to go with electronics?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, all of the, the reason we, the reason we use the Brink's 50/20 lock series in our device is because it is the only lock manufactured anywhere today that has the ability to do the audible alarm. People ask us all the time, why don't you use Folgers? Why don't we? It's nothing against their locks. It's only because this is the only one that has that feature built into the lock. So, nothing against any competitors. We, I would love to use, be able to use any lock out there. It would really open up business for us. But today, this is the only lock that offers that audible alarm. But we've already got the board and all the equipment in here. It would be very easy to come back and add that at any time. Actually, it would be very simple to add as well.
And on that, on that lock cylinder right there, after it being with the first time, we did some research, his Brink's lock is half the price of our Folger Adams locks.
Or less.
Or less.
Further questions?
I have another one. So, say we built a new facility, would we be able to use these over there, like transfer the ones that we put in here over to that new facility?
Yes, ma'am. Great question. So, parts of it, because we do weld the back plate to the frame, it would be probably cost prohibitive to remove that back plate, but from the housing, the lock and, and most of the rest of it, yes, ma'am, we'd be able to use the biggest majority of this except that welded back plate.
And how much does that cost?
That is a minimum piece. I mean, you're talking a piece of metal that is, I would say it's in the dollars. I mean, less than $100. I don't want to, I don't want to give you a dollar off the top of my head, but it would be very minimum cost. And this is going to be, what we are proposing for new construction, this is a retrofit application. But what we're seeing across the country is new facilities being built and they're being built with the same locks that are currently being defeated today. So, our new construction product is this same situation. What we're doing is we're going to the hollow metal factories and the providers and saying, hey, we can do this same application and we're going to actually save you money in time. You're not going to have to worry about the dimensions for your hinge. You're not going to have to worry about cutting the pocket out for the existing lock. We no longer, we no longer need that. It's not a big deal. All we need is the frame and the door. We're going to do the rest with the continuous hinge and our surface mounted lock. So, in terms of the hollow metal, it's going to save money and prep time for them for our new construction.
Is there a state contract for this?
I don't know.
But you don't think this is sole source?
This is sole source.
It is.
It doesn't have a patent.
Yes. Commissioner, you're trying, you believe that there are other locks that are cheaper that do the same thing? Is that what you're trying to say?
That would be, I can't say that it's precisely the same, no, because obviously you've got a patent, but there may be other, there may be other locks that would achieve as much of the same purpose as, as useful at a lower cost. And I, I think that we owe it to the taxpayers to make sure that we've looked at those options.
Do you have a sample in mind or a lock in mind?
No.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no other, and I apologize, I called the Wink Co. and you're a little uh, right. I want to make that clear for you. Any other discussion on this item, which I think is just a presentation right here, if there's no action item on this, right?
Yes. But I would encourage, if there's any questions, ask them now, by the, by the man's here, the experts here. Our current locks, we have maintenance up there all day long cleaning out the locks. Within hours, there's certain benefit again. I mean, this was clearly, number one, it's going to save lives. It's a, it's a top priority to save lives and it's going to cut down. It's actually going to be less work on our employees to have this system. While we're all here, there, I heard there was concerns that, well, Canadian County just bought locks. Well, Canadian County just bought Berry Locks. I heard the Juvenile Center just bought locks. There is, the difference between what they did and what this lock is is night and day. They didn't replace locks. They replaced cylinders. They replaced some parts of existing locks, more like the lock on that door into this room. So, there, there is no comparison to what the Juvenile Center did. And it's, it's, wasn't any cheaper, wasn't any cheaper than what they did.
On average, the, I would say probably, you guys use Southern lock, we see, Southern Folger lock. We see that lock being anywhere from $16 to $2,200, depending on volume, how many you buy, things like that. Typically, I can install my product with a brand-new Brink's lock for about the same or not much more, depending on volume, location, and things like that.
I do believe this agenda item allows us to go look at the existing lock if there's an interest to the budget board to go travel to a pod and look. I've seen it many times, but if there's another member of the board who feels so desired, okay. Not seeing any desire. Is there nothing further on this item? Moving on to citizens' participation, are there any of those here wish to address or mention anything else beyond what's already been discussed? Seeing none, is there board comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.